It is 6:00 AM. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's start it, let's start this over. It is 6:00 PM. We would not be here to 6:00 AM, promise you. My name is Mayor Robinson and I will be calling this meeting to order. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of our city, the city of Lake City, South Carolina. In the place of the invocation tonight, we will all stand and have a moment of silence of all the victims and lives that we lost in 2020, 22 years ago, excuse me, during a 9/11. And for our own Lieutenant John Stewart, which the anniversary of that tragic day for us happened two years ago on September 17th. And following after that, we will be led by Councilwoman Crosby, the Pledge of Allegiance. Let us all stand, please. Thank you.
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the city council members? Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as printed. It has been properly moved in second. All in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Next, I need a motion to approve the minutes. Approval of minutes for August 8, 2023, mayor and council meeting. It has been properly moved in second. All in favor, show of hands, please. Next, we will have our introduction section. In this introduction section, we have two employees of the city. First, we have SRO Graham, and next, we will have Christopher Blaine Horton with the Fire Department. And these introductions have been added to our agenda. It just gives them an opportunity to introduce themselves. We would do this every meeting, introduce themselves to mayor and council and to you all. Thank you. And can you just let us know how long have you been with the city of Lake City?
I've been here since the last July.
Thank you.
What's your phone number?
843?
Hold on a second. No, we'll get that later. We'll get that later. Thank you. Thank you.
He just said publicly that he, you were on his phone number, he can get it. So you'd be pleased to read it? Thank you.
It's 843-372-0065.
Thank you.
All right. Go on.
Next, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, and everyone else.
Good afternoon.
My name is Christopher Blaine Horton. Been with the city of Lake City since late 2017. Come to love the city. I grew up here. I didn't go to school in Lake City, but I was always around Lake City. It's a great place to work, and I thank everyone for the opportunity to work here.
Thank you. Do appreciate it. Thank you. That is our introductions for tonight. Next, we will go to our presentations. And in order, we have four presentations on the agenda tonight. First would be a proclamation, Women's Equality Day, done by yours truly, Mayor Robinson. Next would be Lake City High School Alumni Association's to speak about homecoming. Then we have Potentate, Irving, Potentate, thank you, Irvin Richardson, excuse me, apologize, Fahim Temple Number 266, and Ms. Cynthia Mallett, and Ms. Rochella Jackson, Senior Center Month, in that order. Can you hear me okay? City of Lake City, the Honorable Yomika Robinson, Mayor, Women's Equality Day proclamation. Whereas Women's Equality Day, August 26th, is a day to acknowledge the importance of women and the impact of the ratification of the 19th Amendment of the United States Constitution. It's also a day to raise awareness to challenges that may adversely affect the careers and advancement of women. Whereas raising awareness to the challenges that women had to go through, and still does to this current day, will help educate our communities to work harder towards equality amongst all citizens regardless of sex. Whereas we as a city, state, and nation should lead by example and support equality in the workforce, educational establishments, healthcare, and political arena. Whereas we continue to make great strides to implement diversity, equity, and inclusion for all people in our municipalities. Whereas to honor Women's Equality Day, the city of Lake City, South Carolina, will work better together to bring awareness by supporting special events, educating the public, and celebrating the women of our communities. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Yomika Robinson, Mayor of the Lake City, of Lake City, South Carolina, as the first elected female and African-American female mayor of Lake City, South Carolina, hereby proclaims and designates August 26th, excuse me, August 26th of each year, to celebrate Women's Equality Day in the city of Lake City, South Carolina. The current mayor will issue a proclamation annually to honor Women's Equality Day. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and calls the seal of the city of Lake City, South Carolina, to be affixed on the 26th day of August 2023 as Women's Equality Day. Signed by yours truly, the Honorable Yomika Robinson, Mayor. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? No? Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I am Rachael Jones. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Thank you. I'm Rachael Jones, and I am the vice president, the first vice president of the Lake City High School Alumni. And Mayor Robinson, if I can, can I just stand in corner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't like to try to talk to anyone with my back turned. I'm sorry. I am Rachael Jones, and I am the first vice president of the Lake City High School Alumni. And it's that time again for us to turn the city blue and gold. I know Lake City has a lot of events, big events here, and our homecoming is one of them. So what we want to do is come before you and to invite everyone, mayor, city council, the community, to come out and help celebrate a homecoming at Lake City High School. Excuse me. Our kids, I work, I'm at the high school, and I'm sorry, being a little late, I work at 200 Center too. But I work at the high school, and our kids look forward to this. This is probably the first homecoming since COVID. We had homecoming last year, but it rained. But this year, these kids actually get the full effect of what homecoming is. And they also enjoy and love to see the community coming together as one. And what we do, we try to start on that Thursday, and what we do, and we invite all the alumni that's coming back home to go shop, small businesses in Lake City, go out to Dollar Moore's, to the Garden, and just actually tour Lake City to see what we have new here and what is coming new here. And then we go all the way out until Sunday. We, Thursday, Friday, which is the football game, tailgate. Saturday is Alumni Day, where we have the biggest tailgate ever, the parade, and Sunday, where we have Sunday services at the high school gym. So we're inviting you to come out. We do have a parade. Parade is for the kids, the school, the alumni, the community. If you would like to join in with the parade, just get in contact with any, well, we have a website. You can go to the Lake City High School Alumni website, and you actually can register to be in the parade. And anything, any other activities that we're having, we have a meet and greet at the stats on Lucas Street on Friday before the game. So could just come out, meet your fellow alumni, chat, have refreshments. There is no charge. We do ask you to come and join the alumni, even if you are not a Lake City High School graduate, we do take on our alumni. And that was all that we needed to do. I do have some weekly of events for homecoming for that week. And I'm, the dates are October, I'm sorry, the dates are September the 28th, 29th, 30th, and the 1st. And I will leave these here if you would like to get a copy of the, what events that we have going on, even down to visiting a high school. On the day of the game, we are invited to come to the high school for a Title I education breakfast. We actually join in to the pet rally with the kids at the high school. Then we leave, tour the city, then we go to the game. If you've never been a part of this, be a part of this, because the kids really, really, really enjoy this. And also, this is huge. We are getting, and I know you guys have heard this, we're getting a new football field built at the high school. So it's gonna be a lot of fundraisers going on during that weekend for that football field. So just please, just join in wherever you see us, anyone, just join in and come out and have a good time. And before I leave, I would like to thank city of Lake City. We've been doing this since 2012, and city of Lake City have been behind us every step of the way. Anything we ask you guys, you don't say no. You try to figure it out, find a way. When it comes down to security, picking up trash, it doesn't matter. And we would love to say thank you for always being behind the alumni from Lake City High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Irvin J. Richardson, the illustrious potentate for Fahim Temple Number 266. For Fahim Temple 266, I have with me a few of the charter members of Fahim 266, and if I can get the rest of Fahim 266 to stand. Thank you. We are here to make good on our pledge to the senior citizens of Lake City. So this is our third presentation. We made a presentation to the Boys and Girls Club and to MBSC Black River, $500 to MBSC Black River, $2,500, $2,500, $2,500 to MBSC Black River, $500 to Boys and Girls Club, and we have a check here for $500 for the senior citizens of Lake City. We believe charity starts at home, and this is home for almost all of us. They're either, this is either their home or they graduated from here. And so they find it not robbery to sew back into the town, the city of Lake City. And I am here just as a figurehead, because I can't do this alone. We have a lot of good members, and they put in a lot of time and effort to raise this money, to sell the tickets, and to do the work that we pledge to do. And Fahim is here, and we are here to stay. We also would like to thank mayor, council, for the support that y'all have given us. We just had our potentate ball, our inaugural potentate ball this year, and it was laid out beautifully. Y'all helped us. Our ditto, the young lady just said, trash pickup, security, all that good stuff. So we would like to thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And that is all we have for today.
If you would like, oh, did you have something to say? Okay.
Yeah, y'all taking pictures?
Yeah, yes. I was gonna, I was actually gonna ask if you come up, and we can get Ms. Cynthia Mallett and Ms. Rochella Jackson. And Ms. Jackson to come up along with Ms. Mallett. All right.
Thank you all so much.
Yes. Thank you Fahim Temple 266 for that generous donation to our senior center. We do appreciate you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to thank mayor and council for giving us the opportunity to come tonight to tell you a little bit about our Lake City Senior Center. As all of you know, I've been with the senior center forever. And also, Ms. Minnie Brown has been there with me ever since we opened the doors in 2006. And in case you don't know where the senior center is, it's the most prettiest building in Lake City. So all you gotta do is look for that, the prettiest building in Lake City, and you will find the Lake City Senior Center. At this time, I would like for our senior center coordinator, Ms. Rochella Jackson, if she will come at this time and bring the golden ladies up with her.
All right, yes.
Since 2006, we have had several coordinators, but right now, we have a brand-new coordinator, and she is an original Lake Cityan. So I hope that that will make a great difference in the success, the future success of the senior center. So Ms. Jackson, if you will come up, and the golden ladies.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I better hold this, 'cause I'm nervous. But you ladies come up. It's definitely an honor and a privilege to be here today, to stand before you as the new coordinator for Lake City Senior Center. Since I've been there, it's been nothing but a pleasure. Not only is it the most prettiest building, it has the most beautiful people. We love each other, we enjoy each other, and it's more of a family environment than a business. We ask that you stop in anytime. The doors are always open, you're always welcome, you can drop in to visit, and you can just drop in and spend a day with us, whatever you choose to do. We offer crafting, we got quilted, we have bow making, we have floor arrangement, we have the best nutrition meal by Ms. Minnie and her group in the back. It's just awesome. It's no better place to be. I started off two days there, and when the position was offered to me, I spoke with Ms. Cynthia, she's one of my mentors, you know, everybody knows Ms. Cynthia. If Ms. Cynthia don't know it, nobody else don't. So I talk with her, and we had some encouraging words and other than, you can do it. And that's what we're doing. We're doing it. So drop in, you don't know what you're missing. We love each other, the love is there, and it's always open to you. We're there from 9:00 to 4:00, Monday through Thursday, and on Fridays, we get out there a little early.
All right.
12:30. And we're not gonna take up all of your time, but the membership, we have applications at the door. You don't even have to come in to stay. You can pick it up, bring it back, read over it, decide what you wanna do, and come on back, 'cause you'll be back, 'cause we enjoy you, and we gonna make you feel welcome. I brought along two of my seniors, well, let me say this before I start, I have one of my sisters, Ms. Juanita, here with me, my nutrition manager, Ms. Minnie Brown, who's been there, I'm not gonna say how long. 22 years, she wanted to be known, okay. And we have some other seniors. If you're a part of the senior center and you're here, please stand. See how they follow me? Thank you, guys, for being here. But anyhow, we got two of them that agreed, and I thought it wouldn't be robbery to ask Ms. Kitty Tidwell as one of them. She's been with us forever, and she is what we call a rare flower. Anything you ask of Ms. Kitty is done. You don't have to ask, it's done. She volunteers most of her time, well, let's say all of her time, but she's also a member. But she don't act like a member when we look, she's working. And if you stop her from working, you have a problem. So we love you, Ms. Tidwell, and we want you to say a few words about what the center means to you. And we also have this lovely lady in green, and this is one that does our floor arrangements. This is Senior Citizen Month, September. If you just walk through and see the floor arrangements, the paintings, Ms. Pat is not here, but in her absence, Ms. Pat Sangatara, awesome art teacher. We have bows, we have a puzzle that Ms. Kitty did, and I don't know how in the world she put all those little pieces together, but she have a picture that's that high. Just stop by and look at the work. It's free, you just walk through. It's out for your visit, you can just stop sitting in the sunroom. But come through and see this awesome work. So at this time, I'm not gonna hold up any more time, I'm gonna let Ms. Kitty say what the center means to her, and then she'll pass the mic on to Ms. Mary Epps. And you ladies know I love you, they are the seasoned seniors, they have activities every Thursday this month. Hat parade, sock hop. They don't hop, they just wear the socks. They gonna have a western attire, and we gonna have an ice cream social. We just love the seniors. We love you, and we're here for you. So please join us and come and visit. If you don't join, just come visit, okay? All right, Ms. Kitty, thank you.
It's always a pleasure and a privilege, y'all, to be able to say something for the senior citizens, because it means so much to me, and I've been with them for a long time, and every day's a new experience, and there's so much to do, and we have trips that we go on from time to time, and we just love each other, and I look forward to just going and being there, and I think just Minnie being there and all the staff, they just, if we have something we want to discuss with them, all we have to do is go, and they get down to our level, and we don't have to worry or be intimidated by talking to them, because they're always there, they're available, and they're ready and willing to because they're always there, they're available, and, and they're ready and willing, uh, to talk to us, and we just, I enjoy it very much, and I love the staff very much, and that everyone means so much to me, and all the, uh, the ladies and the men in the center. Oh, we, we have so much to do, and we can either sit and, uh, uh, talk with each other, or we can sit and drink coffee, or, or fellowship with each other, and, and, uh, from what I see, everybody does love everybody, and, uh, we just get along so great together, and I, I look forward to being there every day, and I'm never out unless there is an emergency or something. But, uh, we have a wonderful, uh, place, beautiful place, uh, to, uh, to go and to, uh, um, to socialize and to visit, you know, with each other. We love each other very much, and I, I thank y'all for the privilege to, uh, come and, uh, represent the senior citizens.
My name is Mary Epps, and it's a pleasure for me to be here with you this afternoon. I've been attending the senior citizens for years, I don't know how many years, but it's been some years. And the senior citizen is my home away from home. And anytime you wanna come someplace and look at some of the work that I've done, just come on down to the senior citizen. Just march down the hall, and you'll see some of what I'm doing. And, uh, we have, we have lunch, we have a healthy meal for one dollar. Where can you go to get a meal for one dollar? We have a healthy meal every day for one dollar. And when we come in in the morning time, Minnie's in that kitchen getting that dinner prepared for us. And furthermore, Vicky, Vicky McGill, he have that pot of coffee on there, so when we come in early in the morning, we can get a, a cup of coffee. So, it's a place from home, it's a place just like home, and the people there, they wrap you up with love. So, we couldn't ask for a better place to be than the Lake City Senior Center. When you become this age, come on down.
All right.
Thank y'all, Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing us to come and share about the Senior Center with you all. And Fahim, and anyone else out there, keep the funds coming in. Anybody who wants to make a donation, you can pull your checkbook out right now, and just make it to the city of Lake City, or the Lake City Senior Center, and we will cash it and put it to great use. Remember, Dr. McKenzie wrote a song that says, "Be kind to old people," 'cause remember, one day, you may get old too.
That's right. Thank you so much. I think everybody in here is now ready to go to the Senior Center. Just to visit, just to visit, just to visit. Thank y'all so much for the presentations tonight, and we're going to move along on our agenda. Next, we have public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. Please let me repeat that. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record with the city clerk to council.
Mayor, Council, before I speak, I was named after my great-grandma.
Ms. Maddie.
My name is Maddie Thomas. Um, please correct that on there.
Skip.
Okay. I checked with my councilperson as usual, and she couldn't get answers for me, so I'm back about the blind spots in the city, the, uh, power lines, because we just had a storm and everything else, and, uh, that need to be checked in, too. I was came in, came out of TV bank, it almost had an accident, there's a blind spot there, okay? Um, I noticed some positions was on the, uh, city thing, I never heard of these positions, but, uh, if we need help, I'll cheap doing double duty. I don't see why we gotta hide some people, maybe somebody can do some double duty. My water beer might not need to go up, just have all this new decoration and everything. But, um, the most important thing to me today is something that happened. I've never been so hurt in my life. I was in nine eleven. Why wasn't I invited to the ceremony? That wasn't put on the page till nine twenty, 'cause we were totally going to page and look for this stuff. I lost family in nine eleven. It's my great-granddaddy. See the Civil War uniform he had on? I have one thousand twenty-six people, just on my mama's side, who have served this country. And for the citizens not to be invited, that hurt me. I've never been so scared, so disorganized, so, nine eleven was heartbreaking. It was heartbreaking, and not to receive an invitation, 'cause I take this everywhere I go, in the voting booth, and have other pitches. Okay? We need to do better, Lake City.
Ms. Maddie, that's your two minutes. Thank you.
Council members, thank you for letting me speak.
Can you say your name?
I'm Diane Yates. I've lived in Lake City all my life.
Thank you, Ms. Yates.
I live on Anderson Street. Um, my city councilperson is Ms. Cooper over there, and she does a great job of keeping us informed. If you are not on her email list, you need to get on it, because she lets you know what's going on. Our concerns today are, we have several members and several residents of Anderson Street here. Um, we've had several attempted break-ins on our street. Um, when the police have come, they haven't caught them. Um, if they did catch them, they let them go, because they were juveniles. We want to see better lighting on our street, we want to see police presence on our street. Um, we are having to buy security cameras for our homes to protect ourselves, because we do not feel like the police presence are there, and if you go to call the police, he doesn't return your call. So, we end up having to call nine-one-one, and if they show up, they show up, if they don't, they don't. Um, it's a very big concern, because we have elderly people on that street, we have widows on that street, and there's a lot of us that are old, and it's got to be stopped. Um, um, I'm, I'm very proud to be here, I'm very concerned about what goes on in this city, and I don't show up unless I have something to say. And this is a very big concern, 'cause somebody's gonna get hurt. It's either gonna be them, or it's just gonna be me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Doing well?
I thank you, Council, for letting me come up and speak. I'm also, uh, resident of Anderson Street. Uh, my family's lived there for a few, two years, and, uh, I have great concern. I come to ask help from the council, police department, any, any help that we can get. Uh, I have witnessed a couple of these things, especially people going, going car-to-car and all, and checking people's doorknobs. But on August the twenty-seventh, about three forty AM, I was disabled, and I can't sleep like a regular person. And I smoked, my wife says, "No smoking in the house," so I had to go outside and get on the carport on the swing. But I heard a pop and a thump behind me, and when I got up and turned, I was face down with a man holding his hand out on me. Now, he backed up, because he seen what I, I, I reached for my protection, and he said, "Oh, don't, don't shoot me, don't shoot me, this is a flashlight." And he, he, he flashed himself all over with it. But like Ms. Diane said, there's so many people with disabilities, older, that if we could please have any help, or, or, or patrol that could come through on, you know, our whole neighborhood, it don't have to be just our street from there back to, uh, Main Street. Um, everybody gets along good, but it would be really, really good from two AM to four-thirty AM in the morning. This is the biggest time that I've noticed that stuff's taking place. And, uh, I thank you for your time, and, uh, your diligence and all the work you do. Matter of fact, this courtroom looks mighty good. Looks good. But, uh, any help you, you can give us, I don't wanna have to go through that again. I've had two heart attacks, I don't want.
Thank you. Thank you.
What is your name, please?
Ricky Wellerford. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Administrator, Chief of Police. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak.
State your name.
My name's David Cook. I'm a lifelong resident of Lake City. I can be reached any day from seven AM to about six PM at Lake City Electric Motor Repair. It's our family-run business on Appleline Street. I grew up at two oh four West Thomas Street. My mother's actually born and raised in that house, been in our family for a long, long time. We had an ongoing drainage issue there for in excess of, of twenty-five years that, that I can account for. Mama can, can go on further back. Um, I sent you some pictures, the, uh, first picture, uh, is, is the house as of today. Second picture is when we had Adelia come through on August thirtieth. Thomas Street was blocked off, and I'm thankful that they blocked it off, 'cause when they don't block it and barricade it, people try to drive through it, and it pushes that water up under their house. I have pictures, and I have, uh, duplicate pictures with, uh, timestamp from my cell phone, just to show you the, the next day, uh, what we were looking, what we were looking at, and then even on Friday morning. You know, I'm just asking for some help. I know on Jackson Street, the water comes up out of the manhole, I know our water drains that way. Uh, so I know if it's coming out of a manhole on Jackson Street, there's a blockage there somewhere. I just hope that, uh, y'all would consider looking into that for me. Uh, and then the last, the last page is a picture of a house next door to my mother's, two oh eight West Thomas Street. I think, I think our property owners need to be held a little more accountable for the condition of these dilapidated homes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello again, my name is Rochella Jackson, and I live in Martha Law. I've been back there for forty years almost. My oldest daughter, I base it on my daughter, I have a forty-two-year-old daughter, and I base it on my daughter. But, um, anyhow, the condition of the parks, um, we were told that there shouldn't be any activities in the parks after dark. That's not the case. I don't come out my house after six, I was saying, "What time is meeting?" No, because I don't go in or out at dark. There's always somebody in the park after dark. There's a lot of sexual activities, there's a lot of drug activities. We call, we call, we get help, I won't say we don't get help, we get help, but when the help come, the folks are gone. There's a lot of trash, and my house is in the dead end, so the trash is gonna be moved by dogs to my yard. But my husband is the perfect citizen, so he picks up the trash. Ms. Cynthia does, they keep it really clean, her, her staff. But there shouldn't be activity after dark. Um, we calls, only thing they do is come back there with profanity, 'cause they eat, I don't know how they know who calls, but they do. And it's okay, 'cause it's my house, and I feel like we should be, feel safe. I don't go in my house after eight, and I don't come out after eight. So, it's because we don't know who's back there, and you say something, you don't know if you'll get shot, I can relate to the guy. There's always someone there. We just asking for some help. I feel like if I live there, I should be able to go to Walmart at ten o'clock, but I can't, 'cause there's always, when I say always, someone in the park after dark. We ask for a light, and we hoping that we can get it lit up, they ain't gonna stay where they can be seen. It's dark, so they in the corner, in the cut. So, if we can get some help, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments tonight? Good evening.
I hope this looks great, because I don't have my glasses on, so, I'm winging it here. Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council members. My name is Carolyn Harrison, um, I currently live on Emily Road, but I'm also here in regards to my neighborhood, my family neighborhood, which is, we have a house on Benton Street. Um, recently, we do congratulate the city for all the actions they've taken, tearing down a lot of the dilapidated homes that were standing in their neighborhood. We are so happy that they're gone, but we also have concerns, what will happen with those vacant lots? We have families that are in dire need of homes. We have families that are two generations that are living in homes, because they just can't afford affordable housing. And they don't wanna really be together, but they don't have anywhere to go. So, we're hoping that, once these houses are torn down and the lots become available, that the city at least try and make an effort to put some type of affordable housing in those lots, that some of the people might be able to afford them. I don't know what the city can do to come up with a plan or a program to make it accessible to people of a low income. I know that the federal government handles the Section Eight, but I'm hoping maybe we'll be able to take or get a program where some of those Section Eight clients will be able to use some of their Section Eight to help cover a mortgage, maybe, if there's a program that could be done with that. Because I think it would be helpful, 'cause a lot of times, investors are the ones that go in and purchase a lot of these homes, and once they buy them, then they're just gonna be rental property to those people, and I think they deserve to be homeowners at some point. But I do commend the city council and the city for tearing down a lot of those properties.
Thank you so much, thank you. Any other comments tonight? Okay, if none, we're going to move forward. We're going to our legislative part, and we're gonna start with resolution two zero two three point zero three two, final reading.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For your consideration, resolution number twenty twenty-three point oh three two, final reading. A resolution seeking approval to create Lake City Opportunity Corporation and to accept five new voting members and two non-voting board members, and all matters related thereto the corporate, corporation mission to facilitate, promote, and create opportunities for the city of Lake City, South Carolina.
I need a motion to approve resolution two zero two three point zero three two, final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. It has been properly moved in second. Any questions?
Yes. Here again, I notice you have, what's the rationale behind having five voting members and two non-voting members?
Um, go ahead. If you would allow me, Charlie Ippock, the city lawyer, is here to address all questions relating to this because we took all our leads when we started talking about this item to benefit the city of Lake City from our legal team.
Councilwoman Crosby, thank you for the question. Citizens, I'm Charlie Ippock, I'm the city's attorney. Council members, thank y'all for allowing me the opportunity to speak to that question and a little bit more about the LC Development Corp., as it's called. So this is an exciting time and sort of a threshold moment for Lake City. I'm gonna answer your question specifically, Councilwoman, and give a little bit larger framework so everyone has a really good working understanding of what this is. And I will note for everyone's benefit in the agenda and on the website are the bylaws for the corporation. So please do take a look at those. They're very straightforward and slimmed down and are for y'all's benefit. So again, to provide a little bit of the context here of how this came about, what it is, how it functions and operates, I want to give a, a bit of an overview, again, for the benefit of everyone. As many of y'all have seen over the past several years, not just in South Carolina generally, but specific here to the P.D., there's been a tremendous amount of growth within municipalities, not just within downtown districts, but also generally. It was in the seventies that there was this big shift in South Carolina where really local government was county government, right? And then in the seventies, this thing called home rule came about. Home rule is sort of as it sounds. It made ruling home more centralized. It gave municipalities more say in how they're governed. And so since then, since nineteen seventy-ish, there's been this drawdown from sort of a county level to more of a localized level of various things, like economic development work, simple governance, and more localized rules and procedures. And so pushing that sort of further down the line, you've had in more recent years the city of Florence, the city of Hartsfield, you've had Johnsonville to an extent, you've had places outside of here, of course, Rock Hill, Greenville, all these cities utilizing these tools and these mechanisms to really further push development opportunities in all facets, right? Economically, housing, fundraising, all these sorts of things, you've seen that push. That model is what the LC Opportunity Corps is modeled after. In fact, it is the same legal framework, okay? It is a five oh one C three nonprofit that is categorized as a public benefit corporation, okay? So it's a five oh one C three public benefit corporation. To put it in just really layman's terms, let's say, public charity is a, a good way to, to think about it. Its stated purpose in the bylaws is this, quote, "The corporation's purpose shall be to facilitate, promote, and create opportunities for sound and sustainable economic development, investment, job creation, housing, public health and welfare, and other components of a just and prosperous community in and around the city." As just was spoken about, as hopefully y'all know, the city has taken on tough issues in the past few years, blight being one of them, right? New housing opportunities are being presented by the city. The food truck rodeo, the, uh, the Comic-Con that was, the, just had here, the age con, which was just had here, all of these things, not to mention Arts Fields, but all of those were city-led, right? And so there are all of these things that are going on at the city that then you have this tool in the toolbox over here of this five oh one C three that other cities have been utilizing. And so now, Lake City with this is also putting in the toolbox to help grow, sustain, and further these initiatives. So you may ask, as Councilmember Fleming Crosby did, how exactly, what are the details? How do we do this? All right, so first, again, it's a tact-exempt entity. Two, it's not subject to procurement as the city would be. Three, it's not subject to the debt limit cap that the city is. And it's also not, I should say, it's more flexible in how you can buy and sell property. So that's a great thing, right? It, it's a, a flexible mechanism and there's an explanation as to why, right? These other cities have utilized them so successfully, right in our neighborhood. So again, what are the inner workings here? All right, so specific to your question, it's a seven-member board. There's five voting members and there's two non-voting ex-officio members, okay? Those five initial members are appointed by the city. It's then what you call a self-perpetuating board, which means that after the city sets out that first slate, they then, they're off and running, right? They're staggered terms. So one member's for one year, one member's for two years, one member's for three years. Why? So they don't all roll off at the same time and there's continuity. When they do roll off, they then come to Lake City, to the council. They'll come to you, citizens, and ask your input, ask the council's input, ask various stakeholders throughout the city, hey, who would be a good person to nominate to be on this board? And they self-perpetuate down that line. The two non-voting ex-officio members, one is from the Darla Moore Foundation and the other, the Great Lake, Greater Lake City Alliance, recognizing them having a seat at the table simply just, just makes sense. So that staggering of terms, the term is three years for each member, and then you can be on it three consecutive terms. Again, this is all in the bylaws. It's, uh, very straightforward and right there. Again, this is what we call or refer to as a self-perpetuating board. Of course, the, the entity is controlled by the bylaws, right? That's what in, is inbounds and out-ofbounds. That's sort of your stated purpose, and that's how you move, uh, and direct. I, I kind of liken it to this. I mean, this is a, I think a fair way to think about it. It's like, uh, the city is giving birth to a child, okay? It is like you, you are creating this entity, the city is, through this resolution. You're creating this thing. You teach it, it wa, its ways, right? Its bylaws, its, uh, how, how to, to govern, how to proceed, what you're sort of looking for. You set that slate and off it goes. Off it goes into the world, and it's governing itself. It's doing its own thing. It's going and raising money to build buildings. It's going to, uh, help grow festivals, bring more festivals. It's soliciting donations, it's raising funds, it's doing all of these things that it can. It's helping to facilitate housing. It can do all of these sorts of things. And when it's lost and confused and needs mom and dad, it can come to the city, it can come to you, stakeholders, residents, for some direction, guidance, what's important to us, what do we want to push through. So again, this model, this process, uh, is a tool that has really been tremendously successful, again, not in some far reaches of the state, but here in Florence County to facilitate, promote, and create opportunities for, again, these sound and sustainable economic development, investment, job creation, housing, public health, all these things are fair game for the entity. So let me give a couple of examples, just to further illuminate this and so everyone has a good grasp on it. We all know Greenville is now voted all the time as being one of the most prosperous places to live in the state, one of the best places to live. Okay, the mayor of Greenville was a longstanding, just retired shareholder of our firm. Okay, we've been working with that model there for years and years and years and years. The city of Florence, everyone just assumes the pecan festival is the city of Florence pecan festival. It's not. It's this model's pecan festival. My office in downtown Florence was bought by their model of this, by the city of Florence, and turned into, uh, a, a success, the Waters Building, the building beside the Waters Building in Florence, Hotel Florence, that was bought by this model. And now you, you see the results of that. And we can give, uh, I can be here all night talking about examples. One neat example that just came up is in Spartanburg, they are building a, uh, minorly baseball stadium. Well, this entity, their version of this entity, uh, was able to acquire the land around it. And what are they doing? Building housing, doing commercial development, and just doing awesome things, right? And so this is now a tool in the toolbox, uh, for you, for the citizens, and that's being created by, and then it'll be off and running, uh, created by the city of Lake City. So the model, of course, works, and we've got great resources to help it perpetuate and for its board to run forward. I'll say this too, because I think this is important. I think it's important for, for y'all and the council that with all this local experience, I was on the phone this morning with council members of, of other cities, um, and they said their self, "I would love to come and talk to council. I'd love to come and talk to y'all about how this works, how it works so well, so that when it gets started, it's off and running and everyone knows, um, how to move forward." Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I respect what you're saying out here, and I was awfully saying. And here again, this goes back to, you know, these vote, uh, voting members already selected. Council, as I said, in, uh, about three, three months ago, three or four weeks ago, whoever selected these people, council did not get a chance to talk with these people. I don't know what criteria you used to get them to appoint people. Well, you all have a point of honor already based upon whether or not this, uh, will pass. I don't think, I think it's totally disrespectful, it's unfair to council to be expected to make decisions on something when, I, I'm speaking for myself personally, there was no direct involvement in any of this. This comes to me on hard paper. I picked this packet up, uh, they came out, I think Friday, and, you know, everything's done, everything is put in place, it just doesn't matter.
Came out on Wednesday.
I received the, um, email or whatever, saying it was ready Friday, but I didn't get here until Monday. So, um, I think it's not, I think, and you, and you talk about, uh, civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints and finding solutions for the betterment of, for the city of Lake City. I feel that as a council member, I'm speaking for myself personally, I feel like, I feel, I'm just a con, okay? And you're asking me to do something that is, it's like putting the cart before the horse, so to speak. And I think, um, in this case, we need to have more time. I would, I would love to maybe try to table this so we can meet again and, and really go through this. It's like things are being shoved down our throats and expected to throw our hands up. I don't think it's, for me personally, I don't, um, I, I take, I, I, I'm not for that.
So I'll just speak, um, I certainly can't talk about...
And it also appears that, you know, the people that have been selected already, these are all handpicked people, you know, Russian, South State, and I understand the concept, I totally do, but we do not, I feel, we're not given any input in any of these, um, putting together, you know, these, uh, this, whatever this is, this request for council action, the resolution. I think there needs to be more in-depth involvement with council.
So that, that's great. That's, that's my job, is making sure you have the, the framework and the understanding of, uh, of the corporation. So I'm, I'm glad we're squared away on that. In terms of the internal, um, selection, um, you know, I, I can let William speak to that, but I'll speak to generally. So the resolution is for you to vote on, right? So, so this is, um, you, you certainly don't have to vote for them, and that's the purpose of it coming, uh, before you this morning or this evening. I can't say broadly, um, that it is my understanding that these folks, um, uh, I, I know Reverend Hooker's here and our folks that are from the religious community, from the financial community, and are engaged stakeholders. Beyond that, um, I, I'm happy for whomever to, to speak to it. But that's great to have, have that discussion about who the city wants on here because it, it is, as I mentioned a moment ago, Lake City appoints the council, the initial slate, and then thereafter, again, it's self-perpetuating, so they appoint themselves. Um, and so this is the, uh, not appoint themselves, they vote themselves on replacements, um, again, with advice and counsel from, from stakeholders. Yes, sir.
They appoint themselves, who they talk to to get over this?
Yeah, and so that's what the bylaws detail. There's a whole section sort of devoted to that, of coming and talking to, um, the council, um, talking amongst themselves, of course, stakeholders and other folks. But I mean, to be clear, this is a, a entity of its own, right? That after it sort of birthed and created, um, they're off and running. And so again, to be clear, the Lake City Council does not retain the right to say who's on the board, uh, fifteen years from now, or something to that effect.
Okay, so, was this information disseminated throughout the city where other people, you said, you know, they'll appoint themselves, and then you came back and said that they, I forgot what, what term you used, but is this information disseminated throughout the community, throughout the city for people to have an opportunity to serve on the board? Number one. If not, what criteria was used to notify these people on the board?
I'm just the lawyer. You, you'll, you'll have to ask administration about that.
I'll speak on that, Councilmember Crosby, if you would allow.
We, we don't know day-to-day internal things going on, and that, that needs to, that needs to change, it really needs to change, and because I think it's just, um, it's, it's, the expectation is too great to just make a decision on doing this, and then you're pushed back. Got what we want, don't need you anymore.
So is there a question you would like for me to answer? Basically, the, what, what we did was, basically...
Is it not on?
Basically, what we did was, we took our leadership from our, our legal team. Our legal team said that we needed to get a diverse for the first time across the spectrum that would be beneficial to get this up and running, financial, real estate, and part of the community. So we took, uh, we looked at, we talked to several people.
All of these citizens?
All of them are citizens of Lake City, living in Lake City.
No.
Which ones not?
No.
If you bring it to my attention, I'm here. And let me say this, these aren't set in stone. Once we get this up and running and y'all say, "We'll advertise, anybody in the city of Lake City that want to participate, we'll bring a slate back to you." We're not putting these down, but we looked at these as individuals that were business leaders in the community, that were experts in the field that the city needed to dwell in to make this profitable and make this functional and make this succeed. There's nothing setting here that's going to... There's nothing setting here that's going to make sure that we're trying to throw anything down anybody's throat.
This is nothing personal against anyone.
No, ma'am.
My concern is that you expect, I'm speaking for myself, let the rest, I'm speaking for themselves, you want to bring something to us, make it happen for you, and we just ride off into the sunset, we don't need you anymore. It's not, I, I think, we need to give this, not waste so much time on it, but I think we need to table this and come back and make an informed decision.
I don't, I don't think that's the case that we're trying to, or anyone is trying to just put something before you and just expect for you to do it. This is a great, like Attorney Ipek stated, that this is something that a lot of different other municipalities is doing, and we're trying to find ways to help Lake City move forward. And this Lake City Opportunity Corporation that the administration came up with, with legal advice, is a good way to help Lake City move forward and a good way to encourage our community members, either if they are citizens or they're business owners here, deal a lot in Lake City, to get them and encourage them to participate.
Well, you're entitled to your opinion about that, and so I'm entitled to mine. As I stated, as I stated, this information was just received on Friday.
I think it's about respect, it's about respect. At the end of the day, we, I don't feel respected.
Exactly.
And that's where, that's where the whole hiccup is, excuse me, that's where the whole hiccup is. If we could get together and talk about stuff like this, of course, if it's for the betterment of the community, we are for it, but it's about coming, okay, we have a whole month. How long, how long has this been in place? We had a whole month to get together, not three or four days before council meeting. And again, it's nothing towards these people that, the voting, the voting members, the members on this board, but it's about respect for the council, just like Ms. Buffy said, I agree with her. At the end of the day, don't come to us needing us for this part right here, and then it's like, oh, okay, we got it, we got what we want. Respect us.
That's definitely not the intention. I don't want you to think that's the intention, but...
Well, I'd like to make, make a motion to table this.
Thank you, we can. For us to be able to move on, and we can definitely talk about it later as council together, we can do so.
I'd like to make a motion to table, give me a second.
Second.
Do we have to get done with the first motion first? Because the first motion was made and second.
Drop that.
Okay.
You do need a vote on the table.
Okay. So she made a motion to table?
So you have to be a vote on the, on the table.
Councilwoman Crosby made the motion to say, to table.
Did you, Councilmember Brown second the motion?
Okay. All in favor, show of hands.
You know, I, I, I had a statement, I wanted to say, I hear what you're saying, but then when I first look at it, I look at it as an opportunity for the city, for growth, for to, to move forward for a lot of things. It, it's good that we can get together to discuss it and look at people that I, I thought were some good choices, maybe there's others that could have been on there, but all of us can't be on here only five, only five positions, but maybe we sit and talk about it and let's come to agreement and move forward to the opportunity for growth for the city of Lake City. I see as growth, that's what I see there.
So we have a motion.
Did Mayor Crosby, did you raise your hand?
Oh, that was for the vote.
You want to table it, you want to vote to table it?
Yes. So we have a motion to table and second, so all in favor, show of hands to table it.
And here, yes.
All opposed?
And here again, I'm here, be clear. It's nothing personal, and just to repeat, lack of respect towards council as we say to other residents. I thank you for listening.
Next resolution.
Mayor Council, for your consideration, resolution number 2023.033, final reading. A resolution authorizing the city of Lake City, South Carolina to reappoint Mr. Cleo Fullmore to serve another term on the board and zoning bill ending 10/1/2027. Mr. Cleo Fullmore was previously served on the board of zoning appeals. His term will expire on 10/1/2023. Mr. Fullmore expressed through an email his desire to continue to serve on the board of zoning appeals through 10/1/2027 and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2023.033 for final reading. It has been properly moved in second. All in favor, show of hands. Oh, excuse me, any questions?
Y'all had an applicant put in?
No, sir.
Was it advertised?
The previous, no, it was not advertised.
We, we are supposed to answer that question.
Our, our boards and commissions is handled through our city clerk. Madam Clerk, if you will answer that question, please.
Thank you.
But, you know, the thing is, the clerk is the clerk to mayor and council.
Because she can't...
Maybe handled through her, that may be her daily duty, but talked at a council meeting.
He actually, he actually reached out to us and said he wished to continue. So no, it was not advertised, and we accepted no applications for it.
The clerk is not supposed to be present like that at a council meeting, even though that may be a part of her daily duties and responsibilities. As long as I've been on council, I've never had a person...
Well, a clerk can, our clerk can answer, because she deals with, yes, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We're going to move forward, okay?
Question, answer. So no one put in for that job?
Because he, he set forth that he wanted to continue to be on the board. No, sir.
So y'all didn't advertise?
No, sir.
When they, when they decide that they want to continue, we go ahead along with that. If they decide they do not want to continue, we get proof that they do not by email or letter, and then we place it out. Any other questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposes? Okay.
Mayor, Mayor Council, for your consideration, resolution number 2023.034, final reading. A resolution establishing acceptance of the recommendation from the bid committee to award Triple T demolition, the non-asbestos contract, in the amount of $5,400 for the southwest area demolition project. Number three, contingent to the CDBG approval for the city of Lake City and all matters related thereto.
Can I get a motion to approve resolution 2023.034 for final reading?
Motion to approve resolution 2023.034 for final reading.
It has been moved and properly second. Any questions?
Okay, can you define southwest area? What streets or what have you?
This southwest area is where we've been doing the demolition at already, down 52 in that area that was already pre-approved last year. I'm not sure what these addresses, the addresses on this are, project number three, it doesn't just state, it just states the southwest demolition project number three.
Okay, can I ask that you forward that information, I guess by tax, by bill tomorrow morning, the specific addresses?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
And that's the, that's the crew that go in and check the houses and everything, the buildings and all, before they go in and demolish?
Yeah, this has already been done. These are the ones that are non-asbestos. So they would just be demolished, cleared off, and grass planted.
And the, the land goes back to the...
We don't own the land.
No, the land, yeah. Because I know it was, it was something else that came up, I was, okay, so it's...
It's always the property owner, yeah. We have no control over it.
Okay, now, once this demolition takes place and grass starts growing again, how much do we really enforce keeping that lot clean?
We have a code enforcement officer that will start sending letters out, and after a certain period of time, we will go and do it ourselves. Once they do not respond, they will get ticketed, and then we can go onto the property and do it ourselves and charge them on their taxes.
Well, I'd like to see more teeth put into enforcement with these overgrown lots and make the home, the landowners or homeowners responsible for it.
We, we do within the guidelines set forth by the law, because we are set in stone on what we can and cannot do.
Right.
Just like when on the demolition of the house, it's the same principle. We don't own the property, we can only make requests, and after so much period of time, then we do, we can't take legal action. We had one that came in the other day saying that, you know, "You tearing my house down, I don't know anything about it." But yet she was sitting in the room giving her guidelines, and she never reacted, and what, 30 days later, she, she, we tore the house down.
Okay, like I said, maybe we need to put more teeth in that, and we need to come to the board again on that, for these blighted areas, overgrown lots. I'd like to see more action taken, serious action, especially on the east side of town. There's so many condemned houses, overgrown lots, it looks like a third world country. And I'd like for you all to do your job and make it happen and get...
It's, it's, I can say...
Do whatever is necessary, let me finish, please give me...
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Please take the necessary actions to get that, those lots taken care of. Thank you.
I can say, it is definitely a process, and our staff have really been working hard doing that. They have already been putting the work in. It's not something that can be done overnight, it's something that we talk weekly about. So they, they are out there doing what they need to do to make sure that we're doing it properly and in order, because you just can't go up to a property and they don't, they don't do what we ask them to do, and then the next day we take action. It's a process. So they are working hard on doing it. Any other questions on this resolution?
That, that I do understand, I have been up here many, many, many years and have complained about blank so much in the past. I do understand there's a process. I don't have to be reeducated on that. So I'm asking that more pride is taken in clearing up the entire community, especially on the east side of town. No, you can't, I know you can't do it overnight, that would be common sense, no, you can't do it overnight.
Any other questions on resolution 2023.034? If not, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor Council, for your consideration, resolution number 2023.035, final reading. A resolution of the city of Lake City accepting the resignation of Ms. Rosalind McFadden from the planning commission board and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2023.035 for final reading.
Move to approve resolution 2023.035 for final reading.
Second. It has been properly moved in second. Any questions?
So right now, with her resigning, it'll be opening on the planning commission board now?
Yes, and it has been, it has been advertised.
For how long has it been advertised, and how many more days do we have?
Madam Clerk, you are allowed to, to speak. Yes, ma'am.
Once we receive Ms. Rosalind's...
Can you use the mic, please? I'm sorry.
Once we receive Ms. Rosalind's letter of resignation, we immediately put it up and we advertise it for two week period, and we received one application.
So y'all don't receive one?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any special qualifications or criteria qualifications in there for a replacement?
The regulation states the, the qualifications that should be considered when pointing a person to a planning commission, and it also is ran through, again, the policy that we have in place that was never put in place, that we have a five-team member, one considering of Mayor Emeke Robinson's there, Randy Driggers, Chief Randy Driggers there, the code enforcement, Greg Carteret is there, Brandon Carter is there as far as the executive finance, and I sit in and take notes of the meeting. The two people that are most qualified to ask the questions are Chief Driggers and Greg Carteret, because it is planning and they deal with these members on a daily or, you know, weekly basis.
City administrator, his assistant, in there, when these meetings going on?
If, if the city, if the deputy city administrator is available, he, he also is included in those meetings.
But at the end of the day, anybody that is chosen and has passed all the criteria, there is an education process that goes through, which is handled through the municipal association, is required.
We do annual, we do annual training. Members have to do a six-hour training, and the existing members have a three-hour annual training. We just recently did one at the firehouse training room, and we had about five members show up to do the annual training, six-hour train, two-hour, three-hour training.
That's nothing new, is it?
Training?
Uh huh.
No, ma'am, it's, it's been going on, we just...
I knew it was going on, I was just waiting to see...
Any other questions on this resolution?
I'd like to look at that again. What, you said we have something in place? You have a copy of that? An ordinance or whatever?
Councilmember Crosby, before me coming on board, there was no policy in place whatsoever, and it placed anybody on the building zoning board.
Okay, has that come before council, since then? To, to, did you, did you, is it a policy? An ordinance come before council to vote on?
I'm not saying it, I'm not actually saying it's a policy, it's something that we put in place, I recommend that we put in place in order to be able to put people on the board, instead of just coming in and handing an application and them coming before council, which is done before in a resolution, and being placed on the board without you being interviewed.
That is, again, that should be council making that decision. What, you want us to vote on board, board placement, so council should make the, come up with a policy?
Not being disrespectful, Councilmember Crosby, but I was putting something in place that I thought that would be good, because we had nothing previously in place. If you would like to adopt a policy, I would gladly put it in writing for you. Put it forward to the resident, to you.
That should have come before policy, council before you even did that. I don't, I don't want to repeat myself.
Thank you.
The resignation.
All in favor, show of hands.
The resignation of Ms. Rosalind McFadden.
Which, which email has not been sent yet, though?
The email has not been sent? What you mean? What do you mean?
The clerk said that, but she had not received an email, that's exactly what I meant.
Which email?
Email from...
For her resignation.
I have received an email, senior...
It's in your...
Okay, I didn't see it, I thought you said that you did not receive one.
No, ma'am. We, she wouldn't, we would not do that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mayor Council, for your consideration, resolution number 2023.036, final reading. A resolution, a resolution authorizing the city of Lake City, South Carolina to reappoint Mr. C.B. Askins to serve another term in the planning commission board ending on 10/8/2027. Mr. C.B. Askins has previously served on the planning commission board, and his term will expire 10/8/2023. Mr. C.B. Askins expressed through email his desire to continue serving on the planning commission board through 10/8/2027 and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2023.036 for final reading, please.
Motion to approve resolution 2023.036 for final reading.
It has been properly moved in, excuse me.
Second.
Thank you. It has been properly moved in second.
No questions?
Wait a minute, is that your uncle?
No, I can't.
Okay. Okay, not good.
If no other questions, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor Council, for your consideration, resolution number twenty twenty three point oh three seven, final reading. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking approval to change Tuesday, November fourteen, twenty twenty three, regular city council meeting to a previous business day of Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty three and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution two zero two three point three zero seven for final reading.
Move to approve.
Second. It has been properly moved and second, any questions?
What's happening on the, um, fourteen?
You're traveling to Atlanta, Georgia for the National League of Cities.
That is right. Okay, I do, it's something on your agenda. Thank you.
Mayor.
Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, y'all didn't vote. I just moved.
All in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, Mayor Council, Mayor Council. Uh, the monthly financial statement, uh, which is page fifty two in your packet. General fund, we have revenues through August thirty first of seven hundred ninety nine thousand, six hundred forty four dollars. Uh, at seven point nine percent of the budget. We have expenses, expenses of one million, five eighty one, which is fifteen percent of the budget. Uh, that's overspent by seven hundred eighty two thousand. For the water fund, we have revenues of five hundred ninety six thousand, uh, twenty six point seven percent of the budget. We have expenses of two hundred ninety three thousand, which is thirteen percent of the budget. Uh, we have three hundred and three thousand, uh, surplus. The sewer fund, we have revenues of one million, two sixteen, four sixty eight, thirty one percent of the budget. We have expenses of five hundred and two thousand, twelve percent of the budget, seven hundred fourteen thousand, uh, surplus. Uh, in the stormwater, uh, we have a year to date actual thirty five thousand, seven hundred and eight. And we have expenses of eight thousand, three thirty three. And the reserves for the water, we put six thousand, one forty five in the reserve account, which brings it year to date to twelve thousand, two ninety. In the sewer account, we put in the reserve six thousand, eleven, which brings that year to date to twelve thousand, twenty two. Mayor Council, for your consideration, on page fifty three of your packet, bills to approve be approved. Numbers one through five.
Need a motion to approve bills, items one through five for September twelfth, twenty twenty three.
Move to approve bills, one through five.
Second. It has been properly moved and second, any questions? If no questions, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed?
Thank you, Mayor Council, that's all we have.
Thank you, William, Mr. Hall. Next on the agenda, we have an executive session for the receipt of legal advice related to boards and commissions and other legal advice as it relates to the city of Lake City and other matters related thereto. I need a motion to, um, go into executive session. Second. It has been properly moved and second. We will go into executives.
Okay, we did not take any action in executive session. We are now in our council meeting with council members reports and mayor reports. We'll start with Councilman Brown.
The part over to the county, could we check with, with the county and see what they gonna do about the dirt, that dirt hill back there?
It's gonna be changed, it's gonna be quiet down there.
Yeah, okay.
Because I think what they trying to contract directly is that we want the dirt.
Okay, yeah, because I had some citizens.
And we need for the land to say so some kind of divide.
Yeah, I had some citizens calling and asking me what they're gonna do with the dirt. Yeah, I had some citizens calling and asking me what they was gonna do with dirt.
Yeah, somebody called me too, I mean, Bud and Bud.
Cause they says it's an isolate.
Oh, I'll call, oh, Kevin Yocum.
Okay.
Jason, that probably still aren't going, so you can see how it change out.
Alright, and other than that, that's pretty much it, and thank everyone for coming out tonight.
And we contacted CSX, and they're waiting on contractors, everybody needs contractors.
Okay, and the lights on main, on main, East Main Street then?
Send them, send it back to Du Power on Thursday.
Okay, thank you, and that's all I got, that's all I got.
Again, thanks everyone for coming out. I am, I just asked for the people to, um, that actually to elaborate again on what the citizens in my district said about having more safety in the community. I wish that they were here because I do have some information for them, but it's all good. I will, um, relay it to them later on. But, uh, to Chief Cooper, if you could just have your staff kinda still patrol on Anderson Street, and, I mean, everywhere, but because of, you know, those people are scared, and I'm just afraid that somebody is gonna get hurt. Um, if you could just have them, uh, make sure that they patrol, um, especially around those hours. She was pertaining to, I think, well, he was pertaining to two or four o'clock in the morning, two to four o'clock in the morning. If I could just do that, I would greatly appreciate that. Um, on September twenty-third, I am going to be having a, um, a coffee and conversations with your council member at the Lake City Library. Um, I'll get more information out, um, about that. And that situation would just be to, of course, uh, give the community, um, more information about what's going on, um, because everybody does not make it to council meetings. Um, also, um, this month is National Suicide and Seco Cell Awareness Month. I just ask that you guys be aware of that. If you guys have any, um, people that having any type of, um, or know anyone that is having any type of suicidal ideations or anything like that, to contact your nearest, um, mental health center, or you can go to the ER, uh, to get help with that. Uh, let's see, of course, COVID is back on the rise. Um, I test people almost every day for COVID, and I just want you guys to make sure that you are being safe, washing your hands, and of course, start back keeping a distance if you can. And, um, that is it, um, of course, stay vigilant and stay safe, have a good night.
Mayor, could I say something? Um, Chief Cooper, could you get the, the officer patrol, the Matla Park for me at night, during the night, if you don't mind?
Oh, yeah. Yes, you'll probably see something coming up too in the weekly minutes, um, weekly meeting minutes and stuff. We actually working on it, we got a resolve for it, I think it's gonna mitigate, she has going over there. But I, but until then, it'll be over there.
Okay, thank you, bye.
We've been working on that for, for a while.
For a while, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, good evening, thank everyone for coming out. Please continue to come, if you can hear me. And also, we have this program called, um, it's a free program called Strengthening Families, and the purpose of that program is to build resilience between parents and children, and children and parents. We talk about children, parents' behavior with their children, and improving their relationship with them, and building stronger relationships, and ways, better ways to manage stress. It's gonna, it takes children ages six to eleven, but a child who's either six, seven, eight, nine, ten, or eleven will qualify the family for the program. But any children under the age of six can still participate, and any over the age of eleven can participate. Um, they are, will be provided a full family sit-down meal when they arrive. And, um, after that, then they break out into sessions and begin going into the, uh, to the, uh, curriculum. It's a very, very good program, and, um, if y'all know any one of the children between those ages, please let me know. And it's supposed to start at Wesley Church, I think, next Monday. I'll know more about it tomorrow, but it's supposed to start next Monday at five o'clock. And thank you.
Thank you all for coming out, this has been a long, interesting meeting. Um, I just have one quick announcement. Um, Florence School District Three Fundraising Committee, we are doing a golf ball drop. Uh, there's ten dollars a ball. Um, you have until Wednesday, September twenty-seventh, to get your balls in, and this forum. If you need a forum, just reach out. And, um, this would be held September thirtieth, that would be doing homecoming at five PM behind J. Paul Truluck. So, ten dollar a ball, uh, September thirtieth, five o'clock at J. Paul. Thank you all for coming out.
Yeah, look at all these people. Uh, I want to say, um, I know this is not the city, but at the lake, uh, a family were telling me about where the playground was at. Her child almost went to that lake, and she was saying, why they don't have a, uh, a bar or something right there where the playground was at? And, uh, she was very concerned about that, uh, she had her grandchildren. She said, Lord, if it wasn't for someone else grabbing the child, the child wouldn't have gone into that lake. So, uh, the county need to know about that, uh, issue. They said there's nothing to stop a child from going in that lake and playing on that playground. And I think she said the child that want to go in there have some special needs. Uh, also, I had planned a meeting for this week, but, uh, due to another, uh, community engagement, uh, I recommend to, to delay that for another day. I called the, um, the Boys and Girls Club to cancel the meeting, um, so people can come in and discuss and talk about the issue that they always bring to the, uh, meeting. Um, I would let you know when I get another date set up, so, um, you, we can come together and sit down and talk, and have a little snack or a little lunch or whatever about the issue that, that concern our city and our community. Uh, and, and the dog catcher, he told me he was coming three weeks ago, but anyhow, he didn't come. We got some street dogs that run around, people move away and leave their dog, and, 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 uh, you know, the poor little dog, he walking around, he looking at me, I looking at him, and he kinda big. So, anyhow, hopefully that the dog catcher will come. Uh, he was coming the other day, he was coming the other day, and the other day, but he haven't come yet. And, uh, I would like to say, I know the policeman, I was in my yard showing someone some work to do, and I saw all these policemen came running up there, I said, what happened? But anyhow, uh, I know they were taking care of police business, so I never try to interfere with, I see that going on because, uh, I know they're here to protect us, and I appreciate what they do, uh, in my area. I know they can't do everything, but Lord, they be running up and down the streets. I got a whole list of complaints, but you would need a policeman every block to see the things that go on. My camera at night be going off, but they walk by, but they don't come in. You must sometime the bug hit it, and, and, and it goes off. But, uh, we just got to be mindful and, 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 and be aware, and let you know about the situation, because there's not, and never be enough policemen to catch every crime, but be more active than you say, move about so people can know you were there. They know there ain't but one car, so the policeman, they could go on that side of town, could do that one car is over there, so now I could go over that side and do their damage. So, uh, uh, it, it, it's a job. We all have a job here in the city, and, uh, me as council member, I may not sound that much, but my ear is here, I'm listening, and I hear, and I do hear things. I come and I tell William, and I tell the chief, I tell Ms. Marshall, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a voice. When I ran twelve years ago, my thing was to be a voice. I may not have a solution for everything, but I am a voice. Thank you for coming, everybody.
Thank you for, everyone for coming out tonight. Thank everybody for viewing on Facebook and social media. Um, thank everybody that came, um, before to give their public comment on their issues and concerns. Um, I definitely hear everyone, uh, we definitely want our communities to be safe, um, so we're gonna do what we need to do to work hard to make sure that our communities, every community is safe in our city. Um, also, we always have in the back our resource section, where there's, uh, a lot of information, um, about different resources for anyone, and flyers of events that's going on. Um, also, in our city, if you want to know about anything that is going on, please don't hesitate to visit our website, and visit our Facebook page. Our Public Information Office does a fantastic job for keeping us all updated, um, what's going on in our city. Um, I would like to thank the council members for what you do for your districts, um, getting the meetings together, um, making sure that our citizens are educated on and informed about what's going on in our city. Uh, would like to wish my fellow council member, Mayor Pro Tem Nicole Singatary, a happy, happy birthday.
Yeah.
Um, very blessed birthday. Um, want to thank everyone that came out for the brief, um, moment of remembrance and silence on yesterday for nine eleven, um, in front of the Lake City Police Department. Uh, we did put it out there on Facebook, um, it was, um, at a, a, you know, short notice, but it was placed out there. And we just wanted to show everyone that the city of Lake City do stand in remembrance on that, for that tragic day. Um, please look around, of course, you see the new improvements that was made, and it came from our fiscal year budget capital projects. So, I just thank everybody who put in to make this place a better looking, improving place, and I think it's very, very beautiful. And just wanna say, let's stay safe, let's show more, show more love and less hate. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, and if I get a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, um, William, can you, um, the sidewalks in District Two, not only District Two, two, three, four, five, but, um, can you visit those sidewalks, sidewalks, because a lot of them are cracked and chipped, and wanna see if we can, um, work on getting them repaired, replaced, thank you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Uh-huh.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.